Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Work Session. This afternoon, May 6, 2024, at 4:00 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would you please do a little call? I'm Allison.
Count Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Newton.
Present.
Counselor Zinski.
Here.
Counselor Madigoo.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here. As you heard, Rick, Counselor Kaptzinski is going to be online with us today. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the public. Is there any business from the public? At this time, is Mr. Cameron Sodelmeyer online? Cameron, your turn starts.
Can I share my screen?
I don't think that's possible.
Okay. What I want to talk to him about is an agenda item for the work session, and that is vacating Thurston Avenue between water and the riverfront. I'm concerned about this for a couple of reasons. First of all, as you can see in this picture, which I took this morning, that this is one of the crossings that was determined by CARA as one of the connectors between Albany and the waterfront. And several hundred thousand dollars has been spent on redoing this crossing. So I'm not sure why we would see the need to vacate it after spending the money to refurbish the crossing and the street in front of it. The other concern is that this is where the Thurston Canal runs, even though in this particular section, it's under the street. But in both the comprehensive plan for the city of Albany and in the CARA Plan, specifically in the CARA Plan, it talks about an esplanade being built along the Thurston Canal to connect with the waterfront, the Dave Clark Trail, with the parklet. If this street is vacated, then the two properties seen here will have rights to the street, which cuts off the possibility of doing a connector to the riverfront and the parklet. And so I think that it'd be very short sighted to disconnect this from the public. If you vacate it, you lose the right to create the park in it, even if you have an easement on it. That easement wouldn't necessarily give you the rights to create a park in the future. So it kind of short changes the city in the future if it decides that it wants to complete the vision set forth in the comprehensive plan and in the CARA Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any business from the public that's not written, that's in the chambers? Thank you. Next is the Water Master Plan, pages 2 through 26 in your packet. Who's going to be speaking to that? Okay. Ryan Beath?
Beath.
Can you spell your name, please?
B-E-A-T-H-E.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see. Share my screen here real quick. Okay. So, good afternoon, mayor and councilors. My name is Ryan Beath. I'm an engineer here at the city. Two years ago, I was here requesting counsel to approve the contract to complete a new water master plan. One year ago, I was here to provide an update of that work. And today, we're here to present a summary of the final product of those two years of work, which is the city's new water master plan. The project was scoped to be completed by a team of six separate consulting firms, led by the firm West Yost. And with me today are project managers from West Yost, Mel Damewood and Noel Dhrath. Both Mel and Noel have served to help shepherd this project from its scope of work to the final stamped report, which is being presented to you today. A little bit about Mel. Prior to joining West Yost, Mel was with the Eugene Water and Electric Board for over 31 years, serving in many roles, including chief engineer and chief water officer. Noel is a professional engineer with experience in design, construction management, and project management. And Noel is also currently serving as a deputy project manager for the city of Corvallis' wastewater master plan update. Both Mel and Noel join us remotely today to answer any questions you might have at the end. And we have a lot to cover today. This takes about 45 minutes. So we're going to keep moving right along. Okay. So we're going to start here with a few bigger picture points to make at the beginning. All of us here have varying levels of experience with master plan work. So just for background, a master plan is the foundation of a capital improvement program. It's a legal necessity for municipalities with system development charges. These plans allow for an opportunity to take a deep dive into not only how the system is functioning, but also revisit how we need it to function. The final product essentially charts a recommended course for how to prepare for growth and includes prioritized capital improvement projects, planning level costs, and timelines and triggers to make sure services are kept up to par with what's expected. Today, the goal is to provide a summary review of the master plan, after which we will bring it back to you to be considered for adoption. As is with most everything in this plan, the final decision on how and when to apply the recommendations will be dialed in with future financial planning and budgeting work. What was provided in the council memo was the executive summary, which provides the main takeaways from the report, which is primarily what we are reviewing here today. The projects recommended in the report will be summarized towards the end of the presentation. So this report represents the best work of a rather large team of people. So some acknowledgements are due at the front end here. This is the consultant team that the city contracted with to complete this master plan. The team is led by West Yost and Brown and Caldwell. Both firms have worked closely with the city for many years on various aspects of both the water and the wastewater system. I mentioned Mel's 30 years with E-Web. West Yost is also represented by Walt Meyer, who has worked with the city on countless water and wastewater projects for almost 40 years. As far as people, the list goes on from there, with other nationally recognized experts in many of the disciplines covered here today. ACE Engineering is a local structural engineering firm with three decades of experience throughout Oregon. Some key recommendations from the master plan are founded on the structural analysis. The work related to the hydropower plant was led by Canyon Hydro, another Northwest firm that's been building hydropower systems for over 35 years. The majority of the canal-specific work that you'll hear about today was led by West Consultants, a firm dedicated to hydraulic and water resources engineering. This is another firm that the city has worked with for many years. West Consultants teaches the classes for the people in this field. And I've been reading their reports and learning things from them for almost 20 years. Lastly, we have foundation engineering, a dedicated geotechnical engineering firm out of Corvallis that's been around since the early 80s. FEI has close ties to Oregon State University and has had literally thousands of projects in just Lynn and Benton Counties. FEI's familiarity with local conditions and expertise provide a high level of confidence in the recommendations that are founded on their work. In this line of work, there is no substitute for experience, and this group demonstrates that time and time again. The team continued here. These are the main players from the city team, whose hands-on experience, intimate working knowledge of the system, and years of dedicated service was critical in putting together this final report. Some of these people, you probably know better than I do. Kudos to the water plant operators here, who keep the water we give our kids safe in real time every day. A short list of other operations staff here, too, who also keep the systems functioning 24 hours a day. To fire an emergency, who we again thank for taking time out of their day to provide their knowledge. These acknowledgements are important, and I'd like to think the recommendations in this final document will serve to continue to assure that all of our future efforts and investment in the water system continue in the right direction. So before we get into the summary of the project, we will do a little refresher of the system, features of the system itself, starting with the big picture here. You can see a few local waterways and the outline of the city's urban growth boundary. Starting with the most upstream end of the system, the city's raw water sources are the South Saniam River, shown at Point of Diversion Number 1, and the Saniam River at Point of Diversion Number 2. The Saniam Albany Canal carries water from Point of Diversion Number 1, 18 miles to the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant and the adjacent hydropower plant. There are also about 10 minor features along the canal to help it function. Point of Diversion Number 2 is located just downstream of the confluence of the North and South Saniam Rivers. From there, water is pumped about a mile and a half to the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. From those two water treatment plants, about 3 billion gallons of water a year is distributed by pumps, reservoirs, and 280 miles of pipe to about 20,000 customer meters. The major system facilities are shown here. Another perspective of the system layout. This shows the major water system facilities in relation to each other based on elevation. The elevation in town ranges from around 200 feet to over 500 feet, which requires four separate pressure zones to make the system work. Each of these zones requires pumps to pump the water up and reservoirs to store the water. These pumps and reservoirs are essentially sized based on customer demands in each zone. And we have a little arrow here to show where we sit now with respect to system elevations. A few photos of facilities here. Some of these are a bit out of the way and less seen by others. The diversion dam on the South Saniam River. Here, water is pulled up and diverted into the Saniam Albany Canal, which is off to the right of the photo. Water diverted into the canal immediately flows through the V-shaped fish screens you see here, and then flows through the canal headgates, which controls flow into the canal. The canal then carries water 18 miles to the 112-year-old Vine Street Water Treatment Plant and the adjacent hydropower plant. Here's a photo of the pump station that pumps water to the Albany Millersburg Water Treatment Plant. And we have the AM plant and reservoir shown here. A few more photos showing examples of the city's reservoirs and pump stations. This is the inside of the pump station at the Vine Street Plant. And this is the North Albany Pump Station up there, near the roundabout on North Albany Road. And the last photo here, this is the Wildwood Reservoir up off of Edgewood Drive, hidden back there in the trees. Okay, so a little review on the schedule and the scope of the project. As I mentioned at the beginning, the project was aborted in July of 2022. We had an update a year after that. The Oregon Health Authority also reviews this final report, and that process will begin this week, probably. After that, we plan to come back to you to complete the adoption process. And there is the financial plan process that we will also pick up at the right time with Deb Galardi down the road here soon, too. Then a quick look back at the scope of work. The main work was split up into three major phases. The first phase developed the background type criteria that improvements were based on. Phase 2 included the various condition assessments and evaluations and analysis. And Phase 3 compiled the recommended improvements into actual projects. This third phase essentially synthesized and consolidated all the work into a final document. Okay. So this brings us to the report. We're going to review the general outline of each chapter and then touch on key takeaways from each chapter and end with a summary of the recommended projects in Chapter 9. The review for some of these chapters is short, and others take a few minutes. Okay. Before we go into the chapter review, a stop here at the list of appendices. The appendices makes up about three-quarters of the 1,000-page master plan document. This is shown to just provide some context of the extent of the work that was done. The appendices provides the tech memos, reports, assessments, et cetera, that recommendations in this report are based on. Most of these were big efforts, with some serving a multitude of purposes even outside of the master plan work. And we'll touch on a few of these as we go through the chapters. Okay, so here we go with Chapter 1. So Chapter 1 simply lays out the purpose and objectives of the report. The simple summary is that the work was a deep dive into assessing how the system functions and how we need it to function, with the final product providing a recommended path forward for how to prepare for the future. Chapter 1 is just an introduction, so there are really no results or recommendations to review here. Chapter 2. Chapter 2 provides a basic introduction and summary of the existing system, describes the area served, some history, water rights, source water information, the water treatment plants, and other features of the system. As with Chapter 1, there are really no results or recommendations to review here yet either. Chapter 3, population and water demands. So this is where it starts. The whole thing, this whole thing, is essentially supply and demand. So reliable demand projections are important. This work essentially utilized essentially utilized historic demand patterns from years and years of data to forecast future demand patterns to apply to the evaluation of the anticipated future water system conditions. Future demand projections also factored in potential impacts of various uncertainties, including conservation, climate change, and development trends. Some key points to take away from the work in Chapter 3 are that per capita use is now less than what it was predicted it would be years ago. This is due to a list of reasons, including water conservation and replacement of lots of leaky steel pipe that had been in the ground a long time. Also, high use in the summer is the driver for some of the projects recommended in the report. And there may potentially be more discussion here to investigate alternatives and how to possibly adjust the timing of water use during those peak summer demand days. Summer demand days. Also highlighted by the demand analysis was taking the already clear distinctions in seasonal water use and further developing seasonal changes in how the system is operated, which the city has been doing on somewhat of a trial basis now for a couple of years. And there's more on that in Chapter 4. This is just a graphic here from Chapter 3. This illustrates the trend, showing how demands are generally not what they were predicted to be in previous years. Dash lines are old projections, and the solid lines are what has actually happened. Just looking at the blue lines, you can see that the actual demand in solid is less than the dashed projection line. This is a trend being seen in many, many municipal water systems. So moving on to Chapter 4. Chapter 4 covers the performance criteria used for the evaluation of the master plan. Levels of service is another term for this. Levels of service essentially set the bar for how we expect the system to maintain or to perform. The levels of service evaluated in this master plan include the normal, emergency, and new disaster recovery conditions, levels of service. And we'll talk about more of that here in a minute. Notable takeaways from this chapter, one mentioned in a previous slide. A couple of years ago, the city made some operational changes related to seasonal demands. This has been a successful endeavor, and the master plan dials this in with providing further recommendations to acknowledge and formalize the system-wide seasonal adjustments. These improvements in efficiency also factor in newly revised fire and building code standards as well. I mentioned the disaster levels of service. These spur from the 2013 Oregon Resilience Plan, the ORP, which sets goals for water system recovery after a major earthquake. This is a relatively new requirement of master plans in the state of Oregon, and we are going to touch more on that here. Disaster levels of service criteria are intended to ensure reasonable levels of emergency water supply in a post-cascadia subduction zone earthquake scenario. This image shows the target timeframe for recovery as provided in the ORP. This shows the number of days it is expected that a specific type of facility must be up and running after the event. For instance, the backbone pipeline, which is small, which is a small, select set of water mainlines, which we will cover more here in a bit, is expected to be about 80% to 90% functional within 24 hours after the event. Another bit of guidance. Guidance, this is the Pipeline Function Class Table, Table 8.1 from the report. This is part of the classification system that prioritizes the importance of water pipes with respect to the facilities that receive water lines, water from those lines. This figure also comes from Chapter 8. It shows the city's critical facilities that the disaster recovery design criteria are applied to. We will go more into this evaluation in the review of Chapter 8. So on to Chapter 5. Chapter 5 includes a summary of the regulatory requirements that were considered during this master plan process. Regulatory background here. Oregon has primacy to enforce federal drinking water rules, and the Oregon Health Authority is responsible for enforcing those rules. OHA is also the agency that'll be reviewing this report over the next month or so. Chapter 5 goes into details, and a list of some of the regulations are shown here. The takeaway from Chapter 5 is that, simply said, the city has already taken proper steps to reduce water quality concerns, and there are no recommendations to improve water quality. There's a lot on this, and the topic is the current one. But if you have any questions on this, it might be best to go over this at another time. On to Chapter 6. So the purpose of Chapter 6 is to provide an evaluation of the city's water system. The primary focus is on identifying improvements to meet the projected future demands. Projected demands are compared to water rights, the capacity and performance of the water treatment system, and the entire distribution system, including pipes, pumps, and reservoirs. Project recommendations fall into four separate categories: capacity improvements, fire flow improvements, development-driven improvements, and performance improvements. So skipping forward to the recommendations presented in Section 6.5, we have a few slides on this. "A structural seismic evaluation of critical facilities in the treatment and distribution system was completed to identify structural seismic deficiencies." Key concerns are for the Vine Street Plant, which is now over 110 years old, and the North Albany Pump Station. For the reservoirs, today, under existing demand conditions, things look pretty good. But by buildout, which is predicted to be around the year 2070 or so, it's expected that there will be a storage deficit in the summer. At this time, the Wildwood site is a preferred site to add another reservoir in the future because there is space there already. And at that location, it directly serves the primary zone with the storage deficit. There could also be a future opportunity to consolidate some of the Zone 1 storage into a single location. For the pump stations, the North Albany and Gibson Hill Pump Stations are already near capacity. The North Albany Pump Station is recommended for replacement in the next two years or so. And the Gibson Hill Pump Station is recommended for replacement in the next five to 10. And again, as with the Zone 1 reservoirs, there is potential for future consolidation of Zone 1 pump stations as well. For the capacity improvements in the distribution system, 21 are driven by fire flow requirements, and 10 are development-driven. The main capacity improvements recommended at the AM Water Treatment Plant are adding a fifth filtration cell and increasing the number of membranes in each filtration cell at the time the next cell replacement cycle comes around next. So on to Chapter 7. Chapter 7 summarizes condition assessments of the raw and treated water facilities, including the distribution system pipelines. As is the theme here, these condition assessments identify existing and projected future system deficiencies and recommended improvements to fix them. The major features of this chapter include the canal, the hydropower facility, and the plants, pump stations, and reservoirs. A pipeline distribution system assessment was also done through a review and analysis of the existing pipeline database and the city's older pipeline replacement program data. The next set of slides reviews the specific assessments. Okay. So for the canal, seven total assessments were completed. A bank assessment, this work highlighted a continued decline of canal conditions with a list of problem sites identified and documented. A grade control assessment, this was an attempt to check a suspecting or just a suspected contributing factor in the yearly bank failures that we see. Based on the review, grade control sorry, excuse me, grade control did not appear to be a solution to the problem at this time. But it is recommended that the city consider formalizing an adaptive management plan to take on the long-term stability of the canal. The Lebanon Flow Control Structure, this is a flow control structure that was built to pool up water in Lebanon for a non-existent hydro plant that's been gone a long time, and the Lebanon Water Treatment Plant that was relocated a few years ago. Results show that simple modifications to the structure would significantly reduce the potential for embankment breaches in Lebanon. A flushing analysis, this analysis indicated that there was no gate control operational alternative that would result in the reduction of sedimentation in the lower reaches of the canal, meaning that dredging is something that the city will need to will need to continue to do if the canal continues to be operated under the same flow regime as it is today. Cheetah Lake Berm, the Cheetah Lake Berm separates the canal from Cheetah Lake in Lebanon. The plan recommends that the city conduct additional geotechnical work, including exploratory drilling and analysis of the stability of the berm. Canal improvements adjacent to Vine Street. This includes repair of the old walls that you see in the canal along Vine Street. The plan mostly concurs with the same fixes as is presented in the current CIP, which includes multiple blocks of new wall construction, the scale of which being dependent on how the city intends to operate the canal in the future. And finally here, ancillary canal facilities. This included a simple inspection of the other various flow control structures and diversions along the canal. These structures and facilities were generally found to be in good to excellent condition and functioning well. The city's hydroelectric plant. So the facility has been there a long time, and the upgraded system has been in operation for about thirteen years now. There had been some recent issues with achieving its full capacity, and so we folded the inspection into the master plan work. The evaluation concurred that the turbine was not performing to its expected level, and the inspection identified the main issues being corrosion of the internal wicked gate system. It was recommended that the city conduct a future analysis to determine if hydropower generation time can be increased and to perform a thorough return on investment analysis. However, further work on the hydro plant is recommended to be first evaluated in the context of a bigger picture assessment for the site. Section seven-three-five, a summary of results for the treated water facilities. As with the evaluations in chapters six and seven, condition assessments included the water treatment plants, pump stations, and reservoirs. The condition assessments included civil, mechanical, structural, and electrical evaluations. Some of the background data that Albany provided was the Cartograph Asset Registry, which included a long, long list of asset information on valves to compressors, to cranes, to electrical generators, et cetera. Almost six hundred individual assets were assessed and scored. The final scoring was based on condition and performance, useful life, reliability, redundancy, and risk. There are several specific recommendations made here. The first being that the AM Water Treatment Plant, now about fifteen years old, is in good condition without large concerns. Key concerns again are for the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant, related to the seismic and structural assessment, and the North Albany Pump Station. Section seven-four gets into the specifics of the pipeline replacement program. This was developed to better predict and prioritize water main replacement, factoring in issues like high risk, expiring useful life, material, and then putting it all into a recommended twenty-year replacement forecast. The current replacement cycle of pipes in the system is about five hundred years, noting that pipeline useful life is, on paper, generally agreed upon to be less than a hundred. Within the twenty-year CIP timeframe, the master plan recommends a path forward for reducing the replacement cycle to just less than two hundred years. However, ultimately, the aim should be to lower the main replacement cycle to as close to the standard useful life as possible, pending, of course, as does everything in this plan, financial constraints. All this to be further investigated in the upcoming financial plan work. Little bit on the finance part of this. Here we have figure seven-four. This shows how the replacement cycle follows the law of diminishing returns, meaning that incrementally, the more you put into it, the less you get. For example, at the front end, you'll see that the first one to five percent of rate increases would have a bigger impact on lowering the replacement cycle than the next five percent, and so on. This is a topic for another day. The development and refinement of the data behind seven-four was extensive, and the result is a risk-based decision-making tool that can be used to relate rate increases and capital improvement budgets to target replacement cycles.
The target what?
Replacement cycle.
Sorry, I just didn't catch it. Sometimes the end of your sentences trail off, and I'm just help. Thank you.
It's a little bit of, it's a little much, I understand. Okay. So to end, okay, so to end chapter seven here. The condition assessments covered four main features, the canal, hydro, various water facilities, and the distribution pipe system. The distribution pipe system assessment kind of stands alone, and the takeaway with that is a recommended twenty-year replacement cycle plan cutting the current replacement cycle in about half. But it provides a new tool that the city can use so that those future decisions can be made with more confidence in their measured effect on the overall risk and the replacement cycle of the city's two hundred and eighty-plus miles of pipe. With the canal, the condition assessments reminded us of the nature of the ongoing maintenance that is required along this one hundred-plus-year-old man-made channel. And to help improve channel stability, a list of prioritized bank repair projects has been recommended. With the treated water facilities, almost six hundred individual assets were assessed. Some performance-related recommendations included replacement of the North Albany Pump Station and adding a clean-and-place pump at the AM Water Treatment Plant. Also, some general recommendations were identified as operations and maintenance projects. With hydro, the issues with the wicked gates, that was confirmed in the inspection, and the associated anticipated costs to restore capacity presents an issue that will need to be evaluated from a broader viewpoint outside the scope of this master plan work. So in light of the condition assessments, condition assessments and analysis done on the numerous facilities in Vine Street, the downtown reach of the canal, and the hydropower plant, it is recommended that the city perform a long-term viability study of all of the Vine Street water infrastructure, including the treatment plant, the hydro facility, and the downtown sections of the canal. The need for this study is further reinforced by the findings of the seismic assessment that we'll cover next in chapter eight. So in chapter eight, this chapter presents a seismic risk assessment and a mitigation plan to help the city prepare and invest in long-term resilience of the water system. The separate sections in chapter eight are listed here. We will go into a little background first and then cover the sections. So this is a little lengthy, this one here. So the background with this is that in 2011, legislation was passed noting the probable impact of a cascade subduction zone earthquake and the need for a plan to move the state towards resilience to that event. In 2013, the Oregon Resilience Plan was developed, which defined performance targets, as we talked about earlier in chapter four, and detailed recommendations for meeting those targets over a fifty-year period that started in 2013. Since 2018, the Oregon Health Authority has required certain-sized communities in vulnerable areas to prepare these plans. Albany's population and location is such that it is required to do this work. Mel Damewood was involved during the development of these state guidelines, and on another day with more time, he could tell you a story about how important it will be for each individual community to have prepared themselves. So in a nutshell, how the plan works is that through a master plan process, critical facilities for water system supply, such as water treatment plants, reservoirs, essential healthcare, and emergency response facilities are identified. The list of Albany's critical facilities was developed in collaboration with the Fire Department and Emergency Management and utilized other previously established emergency management plans and data, including the city's recently approved natural hazard mitigation plan. With the identification of the critical facilities, major water lines to those critical facilities are identified and categorized as backbone water lines. Then, these lines are classified based on their immediacy of how they are needed in a post-disaster scenario. The remaining simple summary of this is that the critical facilities and backbone water lines are evaluated for performance with respect to the disaster levels of service, and improvements are recommended to help assure those basic levels of service are maintained in a post-disaster scenario. Those recommendations were guided by the city's level of service goals, talked about in chapter four, and are founded on three of the main technical memos that we touched on at the start of this. The geotechnical seismic hazards evaluation, the structural and seismic conditions evaluation, and the pipeline fragility evaluation. Section eight-point-two, a foundational piece of it all, the geotechnical seismic hazard study. This was completed to essentially determine the seismic design parameters for further use in other evaluations. This image shows the geologic map and faulting locations around the city with critical facilities and the backbone pipeline shown as well. Section eight-three, we saw this back in chapter four as well. This is a clip showing the critical pipelines and facilities that supply critical customers and locations in a post-disaster scenario. The pipeline fragility evaluation estimated the seismic fragility of this backbone pipe system. An important takeaway from this evaluation is that the risk of backbone pipeline damage is low. It is recommended, however, to do local condition assessments in the future where pipes cross creeks or rivers when looking at main replacement. But there is no recommendation for replacement of pipeline crossings based solely on earthquake risk. The seismic assessment did, however, look specifically at the two water mains crossing the Lamont River. One is a twenty-four-inch welded steel pipe hanging on the Lion Street Bridge, heading out of town. The other is a thirty-inch HDPE pipe that was born under the Lamont in 2012, located south of the intersection of North Albany Road and Highway twenty. The thirty-inch board line under the Lamont was designed to minimize impacts from earthquake and is expected to stay functional in a post-earthquake scenario. So there are no recommendations for improvements on that crossing, to that crossing. However, with the Lion Street Bridge water line, it's recommended to add earthquake-style valves or integrate a warning system for the existing valves to provide isolation on either side of the bridge in the event of an earthquake, due to the general understanding of the seismic integrity of that bridge. A structural seismic evaluation of critical facilities in the treatment and distribution system is also completed. Several recommendations were made to improve the resiliency of the city's critical water supply facilities. Key concerns, again, are for the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant and the North Albany Pump Station. The largest concerns at Vine Street are again structural, with multiple structures being essentially noncompliant to code. A few other sections from chapter eight. It's recommended that the city review a general seismic resiliency checklist to identify any additional opportunities for improvements in storing some specific items and equipment. Related to flooding hazards, the master plan looked at the effect of the five-hundred-year flooding on critical facilities, but there were no improvements recommended there. And finally, even though North Albany has one main line to it that's expected to maintain its functionality after the Cascadia subduction zone earthquake, it's still recommended to investigate opportunities as an emergency source in North Albany, such as groundwater or other potential strategies, to help supply provisional water after a disaster. This would build on the current emergency plans that the city has in place. So a quick review of chapter eight. The potential seismic hazards associated with magnitude-nine Cascadia subduction zone earthquake were evaluated. The evaluation was guided by the 2013 Oregon Resilience Plan. Key takeaways are that the linear backbone pipeline, the key water line for post-earthquake recovery and resilience, has been found to be at low risk. Multiple Vine Street Water Treatment Plant buildings, including the Rawwater Pump Station, hydroelectric building, soda ash building, all the filters, and the North Albany Pump Station are not expected to survive an earthquake. There are also other recommendations for seismic improvements to multiple reservoirs at multiple reservoir and pump station sites. So again, in light of the shared results from the condition assessment in chapter seven and the seismic evaluations presented here in chapter eight for the Vine Street Plant, the recommendation is reinforced to perform a long-term viability study of the infrastructure associated with the Vine Street site. Chapter eight recommendations are folded into the final set of recommendations, which are reviewed in these next slides coming up for chapter nine. So again, chapter nine includes the compiled list of capital improvement projects. Again, we'll go through each section, ending with the final summary of the recommendations in section nine-three. So section nine-one includes probable construction and capital cost estimates for each proposed project. Construction costs were developed based on bids from other projects and from standard cost estimating guidelines. Section nine-two addresses potential environmental impacts from the recommended projects. This is a state requirement in master plans. Essentially, it's understood that an analysis of potential environmental impacts from each recommended project was not evaluated here. But that, as is always done with Albany projects, the appropriate permitting and necessary consultations with the appropriate environmental agencies will be conducted. And finally, section nine-three. This begins the final presentation of the recommended capital projects. Projects are split into four planning horizons, including the near term, zero to five years, the medium term, which is five to ten, long term, ten to twenty, and the build-out term, which is from twenty years out to the approximate date of the UGB being built out, which is at twenty-seventy or so. Projects are organized by a canal list, a hydro list, and a general water CIP list. Projects out beyond the twenty-year horizon will be reevaluated in the future master plan update. The project trigger, estimated start date, estimated completion year are also listed for each project. And a few points here, that this is master plan level designing, and that more detailed items will obviously be dealt with in future design stages. So the remaining slides include narrative summaries of each CIP list. It's not the intent to cover each project individually, but to provide a general summary of each category, with the reminder that today is just a review prior to bringing it back for consideration of adoption in a future council session. And also remembering that even after adoption, as is with most everything in this plan, the decision on how to apply the recommended changes will be dialed in with future financial planning. That said, there is some discussion that will need to happen regarding the timing of the potential long-term viability study centered around the Vine Street facility as the financial plan and work will be based on the outcome of, potentially based on the outcome of that project. There are some references made to project numbers in the upcoming slides, but it isn't the intent to go through each project here. And there's also a cost summary at the end. So on to the first set of projects here, summary, canal CIP projects. So there's high priority canal projects. They're a group of canal sites that are recommended for high priority repairs spread out over the next twenty-year period. There's also medium and low priority projects, which are proposed for repair in the build-out term. Project costs assume that projects will be grouped together so that the total project length is at least a hundred feet to avoid project premiums, small project premiums. A few other projects listed here. The Vine Street viability study introduced in previous chapters should consider impacts to the canal. Impacts from that study could potentially affect canal flow, and hence the current product recommendations. Hydro recommendations, the hydroelectric turbine was also evaluated in chapter seven, with the main issue being the corrosion of the wicked gate system. Other recommended repairs included installing a spiral case cleanout, recoding the interior of the turbine, changes in the trash rack, a flow meter upgrade, a new hydraulic power unit, and unit, and a generator inspection. An initial return on investment, an initial return on investment analysis was performed as part of this water master plan by comparing the total hydropower CIP costs to the expected revenue from power generation to see if the investment was economical for the city. The maximum revenue projections did not appear to cover the estimated expenses for repair, highlighting that the city could be investing more in a future repair than it might earn back in revenue. Final recommendation for hydro was that the generators, generator inspection should be performed to identify any additional upgrade costs, then update the repair costs for hydro, refine the return on investment analysis presented in this water master plan, and finally fold all of that into the bigger picture Vine Street viability study. As we get to the water CIP list, we first have the recommendation for the Vine Street viability study. Some key points. The existing Vine Street Water Treatment Plant is over 110 years old. Chapter Six describes that if the Vine Street Plant becomes unavailable, the AM plant would be the only source for a long, for long-term drinking water, but the AM plant at maximum capacity is unable to meet future demands by itself. Chapter Seven evaluates structural, mechanical, civil, and electrical conditions at the Vine Street facilities, and it identifies many areas of concern. Chapter Eight provides a seismic evaluation of the Vine Street Site, which noted multiple structures did not comply with current structural standards, further noting that a seismic retrofit for the multiple structures would be very difficult to perform and was not likely not appropriate due to the age and type of the essential facility. So though the Vine Street Facility has been well-maintained over an extended lifetime, it is a key recommendation of this plan that the city conduct a viability study, which would evaluate the canal along Vine Street, the hydroelectric facility, and the treatment plant from a long-term, more holistic perspective. Remaining recommendations, the Vine Street Plant only address immediate needs without improving performance or addressing future condition-related concerns. It's recommended to only make the most immediate needed improvements that are necessary to keep the Vine Street Plant operating efficiently at its existing capacity until the viability study is complete and a final course of action is determined. If the, if the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant remains in service, there is a list of projects that conveys what's recommended at the plant. The costs associated with those improvements are not included in the CIP due to the viability The main improvements recommended at the AM plant are to increase its production capacity by adding the fifth filtration cell and increasing the number of membranes in each cell at the next replacement cycle. Other project recommendations include, among others, adding seismic straps to some chemical tanks and replacing the raw water pump station valves that have been having issues. A future optional project could be to install a sodium hypochlorite generation system. Some storage reservoirs have recommendations to secure reservoir foundations to the tank structure to add seismic resilience. It's also recommended that a new storage reservoir be constructed alongside the current Wildwood Reservoir as water demands increase at near the build-out term. Chapter Six mentions a possibility of consolidating Zone One storage, and that would be dependent on the outcome of the Vine Facility viability study. The highest priority pump station recommendations, recommendation is the near-term replacement of the North Albany Pump Station, as it has existing capacity, seismic, and condition concerns. As water demands increase near the year 2030 or so, the Gibson Hill Pump Station is also recommended for replacement due to future capacity and existing seismic concerns. Some other miscellaneous projects shown here. Again, Chapter Six, Chapter Six mentions a possibility of consolidating Zone One storage as well as the pump stations, and again, as with the reservoirs, this would be based on further evaluation included in the viability study. Distribution system projects. Distribution projects are recommended for four separate factors: capacity, fire flow, condition, and development-driven projects. In general, East Albany development-driven projects were assumed to take place in the medium-term horizon. The remaining South Albany development-driven projects were assumed to take place in the long-term horizon, and fire flow improvements were assumed to take place in the medium-term The Pipeline Replacement Program from Chapter Seven presented the recommended annual cost for the next 20 years to replace the highest priority pipes in the distribution system. These are also presented in a near, medium, and long-term structure. Section 9.3.3, the recommended supplemental studies. Again, the Vine Street Facility, the Vine Street Facility viability study is recommended to explore options for the canal, hydroelectric facility, and the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant. Also, as a standard practice, it's also recommended to perform another water system master plan update in the next 20 years. Additionally, an emergency, an emergency water supply plan is recommended to explore developing an emergency water source for North Albany. Only a couple more. Oh, okay. We should all stand up. So the second-to-last slide shows the summary of the recommended projects programmed into the recommended schedule. There's large dollars and many details buried here, but as we mentioned a few times, as is with, as is with most everything in this plan, the final decision on how and when to apply the recommendations will be dialed in during the future financial plan and budgeting Overall, the total 20-year capital cost is estimated $164 million, which correlates to an annual budget of about $8 million. So the next steps in this process. After the state review, we'll bring this report back to you for the, for adoption. Upon adoption, there needs to be some in-house discussion and planning on how to proceed with some of the supplemental studies recommended in the plan. A note on the state review here, I guess, this master plan was developed with thorough knowledge of the understanding of the state requirements, and I was on the phone with them this morning, so we don't anticipate any issues on that process, knock on wood. So with that, that was a lot, that was a lot of talking, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Well done.
And we take, we'll take any questions you might have.
Counsel, do we have any questions? Counselor Newton?
Well, first, I'm wondering, when you were told that you were going to be presenting on the water supply master plan, did you say, well, I'll be damned?
I signed up for it. Yeah, I was excited.
All right. Sorry, puns aside, I appreciate the thoroughness, you know, no offense to parks, libraries, police, and fire. I think the number one thing I use, and I'm sure that 99.9% of residents use, is turning on their water, and to know that it's reliable and clean is really important. So I really appreciate the thoroughness and dedication to that. I was curious about the cost of the viability study, and also, secondly, if, you know, there was a lot, a lot of charts and words, I want to make sure I'm understanding everything correctly. You said without the Vine Street Facility, the main, main facility wouldn't be able to handle our capacity. So would you anticipate a third facility or something in, in replacement of the Vine Street? I know I'm jumping ahead of the, the horse here.
This is good. So there's two plants now, and down the road, we'll need both plants running to supply demand. And depending on, well, so there's, there's, there's risk related to earthquakes, and so we went through that analysis, and if there aren't improvements done to Vine, that plant may not be there to provide the water that will be needed in the future. I think it's kind of as simple as that. So the viability study would be, and that, that's not, that project's not 100% defined. It, it, the scope of that is still well under discussion, I guess, so to say. But so that, you know, it's, it's somewhat, I think there's some direction, but I think part of it is, is looking at alternatives to Vine Street as a water plant, but there are other factors there. There's the canal, there's the hydro plant, and there's, there's a lot going on there. So I think that'll, that'll be a future project discussion, how that goes. And the cost estimate for that is, it's pretty, it's a, the range is, is a broad, the range is big, so.
You know, the timeline, if, assuming?
That's another one that's, I think, for discussion.
All right.
There's, that's, that's definitely up for discussion.
Okay, thank you. Good? Good. Next up, okay, I have Counselor Novak and then Counselor Smith. Counselor Schaub, since you let me know when you raise your hand, please.
Will do.
Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I appreciate the work that's done on this plan as well, and I'm concerned because I am in North Albany and I represent the people of North Albany. North Albany Pump Station is listed as requiring immediate attention. That's the most high priority, both for seismic and capacity inability to, it's, it's at current demand, and they're, I'm, I'm really concerned that, that, I know earthquakes, you can't tell when they're going to happen, but if it does, then what? We don't, we're not prepared. There's no, I'm really concerned about North Albany, even with all the build-out that's, that's happened and, and is being suggested to happen further, that we don't necessarily have the water infrastructure to handle North Albany.
Yeah. And that's, that's, so that, that, that pump station has, has gradually come up to its, close to its full capacity, and we've conducted this master plan, which, which, this is the exact reason why we do the master plan, so, so this, this stuff could be identified and then, and then planned for. So that is one of the more urgent, not urgent, but more near-term projects, and so I think as this process moves forward, this becomes adopted, and we start, start talking about the financial plan and budgeting, that, that's where that will be put on the schedule.
I appreciate that. I'm just thinking, if, if anything happens to the North Albany Pump Station, we are not currently prepared up the hill in North Albany. You said we'd need an additional reservoir or shore up the reservoirs that are there at Wildwood.
Well, yeah, so the, the Wildwood is just, down the road, there's some additional capacity that is going to be required, just as, as the projections for demand show that we'll need another one. But there's also, there's also the requirement, there's also the recommendation that we do a, a, an emergency supply supplemental study. So, you know, that's, that was number two on the list, I think, or three. One of the alternatives looks like possibly a groundwater source. Plus, the city already has, we, the city has an emergency management plan. We have a, there's a FEMA trailer, the treatment trailer, there's also the, there's, there's mobile water trailers. There are some temporary measures that are, that are available now, but there's, there are long-term things to look at, and that's, that's, that's the point of this process. And so as this, as this is adopted and everybody starts talking dollars, then, then that's, that's how that will, that's how, how that'll get improved. That's how that'll happen, so. But, but yeah, North Albany is a...
It's concerning because
Yeah, for sure.
My family's lived there for decades, and I've seen, especially since moving up the hill, how much build-out there is and how much demand that necessitates, and I just, I'm really concerned that we, we're not, we're not really well-prepared for, and, which is why the study's important, but I'm just, I'm just saying this on behalf of everyone besides me who lives in North Albany, that I would really like to see the city take action regarding additional infrastructure in North Albany for water.
Yes, I, I live up there as well, and it's an important project.
Thank you.
I agree.
Thank you. Counsel, is that it, Counselor Novak?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Two things. Speaking of North Albany, it caught my attention when you mentioned the, the special valves on either end of the pipe under the Lyon Street Bridge to do a temporary fix should anything happen. Is it still true that the, our, our bridges across the Willamette don't rise to the level of first-line response when there's an earthquake, that, that freeway bridges get, get the state's attention first, and?
In general, yes.
Yeah.
I can speak to that super clearly, but the, but, pardon?
Is that a Chuck Perino question?
Yeah, sure, Chuck Perino, but, but neither of those two. So I think that the, the plan is that, the bigger picture plan is to head south to 34 and across in Corvallis. But, so these two bridges are not on that, that list, but I, I don't know if that list, I don't know how often that list change, that list changes. I think it's been like that for a while. Things change, but as of, as of right now, neither of those bridges are, well, they are what they are.
Right.
Counsel, Counselor Montague?
I had one.
Go ahead, please.
The primary point I wanted to make was that when people want to know why our water costs so much money, this is why. And this, and it's, it's not, we've had people come to council meetings in the past and say, well, water should be free, it comes out of the river, or water should be free, it comes out of the sky. Well, it does, but, but it's not necessarily safe to drink or cook with or bathe in, in that state. This, all the stuff that's been done to put this master plan together provides clean, safe water to 58,000 people every day, not including the how many ever, however many who live in Millersburg, does that for them too. So it's, this kind of planning effort is tedious and detailed for one really good reason, and that's public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor Montague?
I'm just going to echo what my fellow counselors have said. Thank you for all this work. I know that's quite a bit. I also wanted to just make a comment that I really do, it sounds like there's a lot of decisions that are kind of hinging on the viability study, so I appreciate that that was highlighted throughout the report, and I'm definitely in, in support of us doing that as soon as possible so that we can make those decisions and continue with planning our future projects. So thank you very much.
Counselor Cops, since, do you have anything?
Just a generalized comment that the decisions that we'll be making in the next year or two, three, or four years, however this comes to final planning, is not for us, it's for generations down the road, and we've got to make some logical and profound commitments to have safe drinking water, and how we wade through this is just part of what, what we do.
Thank you, Counsel. Counselor McGee, you have anything?
Just, thank you for the very comprehensive report. I do have a question. How often are we doing the viability studies?
So the viability study is kind of a one-time thing. The ma, this master plan, this thing, this, this project is, is recommended to be done every 20 years or so, the big, thorough one like this, but it, it's something that kind of gets reviewed a little bit, piecemeal, over the years, like as demand changes and things, we'll, we'll, we'll look at stuff and see what's changing and try to update things. There's been a lot of work in the past since the last 20, since, since the one from the original, well, not the original, but the one from 2004, the last one. So master plans every 20 years or so, the viability study will be, right now, it's sort of defined as one project, I think. Will be done again way down the road when things change. It's a one-time thing, that, that project.
Okay, thank you, Counsel. I do have a couple of things. One, I think the frequency for the review of the master plan should be much sooner than 20 years. A lot is changing in the world right now. Climate, earthquake possibility coming. I've lived through an earthquake before, and I've seen pipes come out of the ground, so it's very scary, and also having two bridges that we can, we may or not be able to rely on, I think 20 years is a long time, so I would appreciate it if we can look at a shorter frequency between the master plan. And I know we're preparing for the future, and last year we, we were given a book called 13 Ways to Kill Your Community. The number one thing on that list was not taking care of your water. And so it's very important that we put sooner eyes or more frequent eyes on our master plan, or at least our water supply, because like Counselor Smith and the other councils have mentioned, we're not here, the water we're doing now is, the work now is not for us. It's for those high schoolers, I will see Wednesday night when they come to council to present their, their, their reports. Thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions regarding waste in our waterways. Just walking through parks, I've seen on creeks by, behind lows, shopping carts, I've seen camps on this, along the waterway, jumping stuff in the river or next to the river. Is that part of this study as far as that, cleaning up that waste product in the canal in our waterways? in the canal in our waterways? Because that's an additional cost that will be incurred by the plan going forward.
So that level of detail wasn't addressed in this work. But I know there is, there's a lot of attention that's placed on those things. There was a, there were a couple interns that were here last year that I think did an inventory, assessed. I think that was Prairie Winkle Creek behind lowes. They did a lot of work to identify where all this stuff was, where the dumping was occurring. I can't speak to everything that operations is doing to work on that. There's also watershed councils that do a lot of projects for that stuff. I think there's a lot of awareness regarding that, but this master plan didn't directly address that.
And then what else I had? You said wicked gate?
Wicked gate.
I've never heard that term before.
A wicked gate, yeah.
What is a wicked gate?
So the wicked gate, so the hydro power plant is, so the canal flows through town. It drops, it's like a 20 or 30-foot drop or something like that. And then it, so the wicked gates essentially are the devices inside the turbine that the water spins. And so you adjust the wicked gates and it adjusts the rate at which it spins, which which in turn generates the power, which is on the second floor. So the turbine's downstairs and the generator's upstairs. It just controls, it's just the spinny part of the hydro.
It turns into a uration or something like that?
It's just directly, they're just like, uh, we should go down there, check it out. It's pretty interesting.
Did he just say we're gonna tour? I'd love that.
It's just, it's just what um, it's just what a, it's just what the water turns that turns the generator. The wicked gates, it's, yeah.
Has anyone on the council had a tour of that place yet? The Vine Street Water Plant?
Years ago.
I live close to it, I'm a huge fan and we like to, you know, go look at the rushing water, but you know.
So maybe
Haven't gone inside, I'd love to.
If somebody could reach out to us and give us a tour, it'd be great.
There's a door up top. It's a mystery door. We've come up with all these theories about it.
Yeah.
Rush, not seismic, I was just gonna get to that. So seismic, seismic work, I was with HP when they did some of the seismic work on HP. It's extremely expensive. Would it be more feasible to look at a possible replacement and then redoing that entire structure? Because that is a brick building, right? How is, it's hard to seismically sound a building of that nature.
Unreinforced masonry is one step above sand as far as structural integrity, so.
That's a good analogy, actually. Okay, thank you so much for your report. It was very comprehensive and I think that I can show, when I can do town halls and stuff like that, young people nowadays are interested in this kind of stuff because they're deciding on what's next for them, what careers they want to go into. And they can see value in something as comprehensive as this. So I can't wait to bring it back when you guys bring it back to us for adoption. So thank you for your report. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda, oh, first of all, great job, guys, putting all this stuff together, team. So let everybody know we really appreciate it. Next on tonight's agenda is Thurston and Jefferson's Vacation Rideaway. Aaron Heimstra and Matthew Rutgers pages 27 and 29 of your packet.
Good evening, Councilor and Mayor. So city staff would like to ask for city council to initiate vacation proceeding for vacating Thurston and Jefferson Rideaway. That's on the north side of Water Avenue. As you're aware from the memo, Water Avenue is being improved through the downtown project. And with that, there are the rail crossings that are being improved. Some of them are being kind of forced to be abandoned with the rail order. And with that, kind of seeing it kind of like a maintenance sort of thing to vacate the rightaways for these two streets because one of them no longer will have access from Water Avenue and the other one serves two businesses currently. There is a city parcel located in the back. But through an access easement, all the properties and the Dave Clark path will keep access. As outlined in the memo, there are two ways to vacate the rightaway. One is from an applicant deciding to go through the planning process of vacating, which requires signatures from adjacent property owners due to the ODOT rail on the south side. This is pretty cumbersome for somebody to be able to initiate it, just having to obtain the signatures from ODOT rail. So similar to the wheelhouse, staff thinks that we can follow the similar process and vacate these two, keep the access so we can make sure that pedestrian amenities are put in in the future to be able to connect Water Avenue with the Dave Clark path. So essentially, we envision the exact same thing as the wheelhouse. So you kind of see the driveway going back, pedestrian access connection in kind of maintaining the same sort of thing on Thurston as well. Maintaining a public utility and access easement does not prevent the city from doing improvements in the future. We can still do pedestrian amenity improvements, utility improvements. This also allows for development adjacent to the easements to be able to have reduced setbacks to the rightaway lines, which means they could build up to the easements. As opposed to right now with the rightaway, they'd have to stay 20 feet back from the rightaway lines. So this kind of allows them to have a little bit more development potential, but not be within our easements. Yeah, so.
Is that it?
That's what I had.
Uh, Council, any questions for the gentleman? Councilor Novak's first.
Okay. I drove that area earlier today and there's an apartment complex between Jefferson and Thurston. And with development that is requested here by, I mean, it says that the trustee, John Bach trustee and the city are in favor of this development. I'm curious as to whether the folks who live in that apartment complex, if we do this and there is development, that could foreseeably affect their quality of their homes, you know, their, do we reach out to them at all? Because this is, doing a vacation like this, then we don't reach out to them, they don't have any idea. If development is the purpose of this, I just, I'm not sure I feel that that's right, that they don't know anything about it and we give the vacation and development happens and they live there. And um, am I understanding this correctly, that if we vacate it, they don't know anything about it, the folks that live there?
So if you approve of us moving forward with vacation, we would go through the planning department and do the vacation process, which has the public hearing and all that, which would notify all people within a certain radius essentially of those two rightaways. So everybody would be notified that this was happening.
Thanks for the reminder.
Any other councillor have anything? Councilor Smith?
I just wanted to clarify that you said that this would not affect public access to that property. People can still go down the driveway and go to Deluxe Brewing. They can still access the Dave Clark path. It doesn't affect that. That's going to be an open area. It's just not going to be city property any longer.
Correct. We'd maintain a public access easement over the whole thing, so essentially all the access gets remained for the public. It just wouldn't be a public street and forced to be built to the city standards for a public rightaway street.
Right. And the Jefferson, Jefferson Street Crossing is closed because of the ODOT rail order, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilor Newton?
I understand why the Jefferson Street Road would be closed due to the ODOT order. I don't understand why we are so hastily willing to, you know, give up our rights for the Thursday. I just don't, I don't see why, what the rush is there. I understand that, you know, we will maintain a pedestrian, public access. You know, I'm not sure like what the parameters would be on that, like if we would have any, if the land is owned by other folks and we just have that, like a sidewalk. I just don't see the rush. And if it's going to be, you know, for spurring development, we have, why don't we wait for the development to come and then make that proposal and say, hey, now we can do this? I just don't see why we're in a rush when we're still in the very, we're just now wrapping up our waterfront projects and I think it's just really short-sighted.
Did you have a specific question?
No, I was just mentioning my thoughts.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilor McGee? Or Councilor Montague has a question? I'll come back to you.
So let me make sure I understand. So if we vacate the, what is the order of vacating the rightofway and then the easement, public easement agreement with these companies? Don't we have to have an agreement with them or we just say, we're gonna vacate this property, but we have an easement and this has to be accessible by the public?
So they kind of go hand in hand. It's, we vacate the rightaway and retain the easements.
Okay, so there's no way that those companies or the property owners can put up a fence and block off access to the Dave Clark path? And also potential, because I want to make sure that we're addressing Mr. Settlemeyer's concerns about us planning in the future of having that be maybe a little pocket part? Or what did he call it?
Espionage? Something like that.
Yes, whatever that is.
It's on the waterfront project.
It's in the comprehensive plan and CARA plan, so I want to make sure we're not tying our hands on that and that this is still a possibility with this public easement that we're gonna retain. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. With having that public access easement, like they wouldn't be able to block it off, put a gate. They wouldn't be able to put improvements in there that would block any sort of public access as well. So if they did, came in for development, we would look at that likely through whatever land use that they'd have to go through and would comment to making sure that all the public access is still being maintained.
Okay.
But, Councilor Novak?
I don't have a question, but I want to say that I kind of agree with Councilor Newton that I don't see what the rush is. And I didn't mention when I was asking a question that I think that Mr. Settlemeyer made some really good points. So I'm not leaning heavily toward voting yes on a vacation at this time.
Thank you. Councilor McGee, you have anything? Councilor Kupchansky?
I'm okay.
Councilor Montague has additional.
So I just want to make sure that we're addressing the why. And I think I understand the why is so we, the city, don't have to maintain that property. It doesn't, it's not ours anymore, so we don't have to keep it up to the standard of the road, a city road anymore. Is that correct in why we would want to do this now so that we don't have to maintain that?
The timing is because of the kind of the waterfront project and the crossings being done. The crossing done at Thurston was done per the crossing order and it was done so that future crossing orders would not be required due to proximity of it. And that one was done to maintain access to existing businesses because that is their access. So we had to make sure it was maintained the whole time as.
Kevin, microphone, please.
Oh, I was just gonna add, because it seems like there may be just a little bit of confusion as to the process. You know, the, as Mr. Heimstra is describing, the council-initiated vacation process is the other option when you could have a privately initiated one, which is right to a planning application. Or you can have a city or city council-initiated vacation, which is, council provides direction to staff of, hey, we'd like to initiate the vacation process. And that's just the process itself. So there's, once we have that direction, then it goes through a planning application process, just like a private property owner would do. We do it, we take in an application, in this case it would be Public Works. We process a staff report and then it would go to our planning commission, who would review the recommendation from staff, whether we, you know, approval or denial. And planning commission would provide a recommendation to you all, to the city council. And at that time, and both of those are public hearings, you know, with notices and everything that we'd see for a type four application. And then city council would take planning commission's recommendation in a new public hearing and make a decision on whether they wanted to actually vacate the rightaway or not. You wouldn't be doing that, you're not doing that tonight. You're only basically providing a, some direction as to whether you wanted us to move forward with the council-initiated vacation process, not the vacation itself. That's more steps down the road.
We'll get more data.
Question?
Go ahead.
It's not the council initiating the process, it's the city coming to the council to initiate the process. Or am I missing something?
Well, staff are bringing forward an option based on what would be our recommendation. But we're asking council, would you, would you like us to move forward with the city council-initiated vacation process? We're, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, how is it council-initiated when it's staff coming to the council?
We're providing a recommendation to council that we think the council should initiate this process. At the end of the day, it's the six of you that get to say, yeah, we like that idea. We want to go ahead and have staff, well, we would like to initiate a vacation process, at which time staff would go back and prepare applications, submit it to the planning division and start the standard type four legislative process.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Councilor Smith?
The process you are describing should elicit comments, questions from a much broader segment of the community than just the seven people on this dais. That should answer those questions about, is it good timing? Is it a good thing to do? What will, what does this mean for me? I live across the street. I live down the, whatever. It's, that's gonna bring out, that will answer the questions that the council has tonight.
That's correct. So there's a, like with our planning applications, especially in a vacation process, the notification area is a little bit weird because it, I think it's like 300 feet off of the sides of it and then 200 feet off the ends, if I'm remembering correctly. But it's several hundred feet off of each way, so you're gonna get notification of surrounding property owners. And they're able to provide comments, as well as anybody else who sees the application are able to provide comments, which staff use in preparing our staff reports. And if you're familiar with our staff reports, we'll actually include those comments in our staff report with what we address each comment. And then when we come to our planning commission, they get provided the staff report that has all the public testimony in it, as well as an opportunity at that planning commission and subsequent public hearing with city council. There's an opportunity for the public to come in and testify verbally as well, or submit testimony, so.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Councilor McGee, you have anything at this time? Uh, Councilor Kupchansky?
No, I'm all in favor of having them take a look and move it forward so we can have better information coming from all sides.
Okay, thank you. Let me go back to the main agenda. I think we have a resolution or something on here. Just direction. So at this time, what I'm hearing from council is that we have a thumbs up to go forward with the process and bring us back something. Please.
In the staff report, can you please make sure that you're addressing Mr. Settlemeyer's concerns in that so that we can at least have that in whatever staff report you guys end up with?
Yeah.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Councilor Smith?
Might be good to have some, at some time, some historical perspective on what the esplanade is in the town center plan.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Before we move on, the definitions and appendices in the water master plan was mind-boggling. Anyway, I should have meant that earlier. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh my gosh. My head was hurting, I'm thinking, what does that mean? What does that mean? My head was hurting. I'm thinking, what does that mean? What does that mean? Uh, next on tonight's agenda, Director LaDain is going to join us and discuss recreational immunity. Uh, pages thirty, thirty and thirty-one of your packet. Is she here? Oh, there she is.
Good evening. Sorry, a little under the weather today, so thank you for the opportunity to present virtually. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Um, so I am here tonight to talk to you a little bit about recreational immunity and to request that you adopt a resolution on Wednesday to allow us to opt into some changes. So um, recently Oregon Senate Bill fifteen seventy-six adjusts ORS, um, which outlines Oregon's general recreational immunity that protects our public and private landowners from lawsuits if someone is injured while recreating. This new bill uh, provides some specific uh, legal definitions as to what recreation is, and those legal definitions now include uh, running, walking and bicycling. Uh, this comes after a case a couple of years ago where a woman in Newport was walking down a trail um, and injured herself and um, said that uh, and filed a lawsuit. Originally it was dismissed, uh, but then the court of appeal sided with the plaintiff saying that um, she was walking just to walk from point A to point B and not actually recreating. So as you can imagine, this would send shockwaves through the recreation community um, as it pretty much puts into jeopardy us being able to offer any amenities. So um, thankfully this new bill has adjusted it so that um, should this situation arise again, we're not immediately going into court. So the new ORS, uh, five, one oh five, six, six, eight automatically applies to cities that are over five hundred thousand, which we do not fall into that category. And so instead there is a provision that allows us to take this to council and have you to opt in. And so that's what I am here uh, recommending that you all do on Wednesday night as uh, the resolution will appear on the consent calendar. And I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Counselor Novak, your first up?
Thank you. Um, my question is, how does recreational immunity impact the city's need to maintain bridges, parks, public places, sidewalks, anywhere that people might take a recreational walk, run or ride a bike?
Sure. So we uh, need to maintain to make sure that we are not being negligent. So um, we do our best to provide safe facilities, safe spaces. Um, if we know something is out of order, we publicize it, we mark it off, we make sure that folks aren't going to go in there. Um, but there is inherent risk with playing and with, with walking on public streets and with just um, bicycling. And so as long as we are not being negligent, uh, if somebody becomes injured doing one of those things where they have some assumed risk, um, this would help to protect us.
I appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure um, that it wouldn't in any way lessen the work that you do to keep everything nice and safe and whatever. Um, I, I asked this purely because I, I take issue with some legislation that was passed in the nineteen eighties that gave huge, sweeping, massively impacting immunity to, I, well, I'll say it, pharmaceutical companies and vaccine manufacturers. So I'm a little leery of immunities and I appreciate you clarifying that you're not going to suddenly not need to keep things up. Thank you.
In all honesty, this allows us to keep anything open.
If it, due to the litigious nature, there were some communities who shut all of their trails um, because they were afraid of lawsuits. And so if we want to continue to keep things uh, to recreate on, open, um, opting into this is our, our best choice.
But they will stay, you're, again, not to make you say it again, but I'm, I'm, I, this is a concern and I, I really want it on the record that this doesn't in any way change how Parks and Rec takes care of our parks and recreational facilities. Thank you very much. Okay. All right.
The same capacity.
Thank you. Counselor Smith?
I wanted to add to the conversation that this uh, Senate bill was a compromise um, measure that was adopted in the short session this time and it will be, recreational immunity will be going back to the twenty twenty-five legislature for a more um, a broad, yeah, a deeper look. There's a, going to be a work group appointed to study it and they're looking for a permanent fix, or as permanent as legislation can be. But this was a, a way to, to take care of things for now.
Your counsel. Um, we also talked about this at the Oregon Mayor's Conference and also at the Legal Oregon Cities Meeting, we just had not too long ago during the mayor's session. Um, a lot of mayors are nervous and Counselor Kim, Director LaDain is correct. Some cities did shut down all their parks and their walkways because they were worried about getting sued. And, and you're correct, Director, that this is a very litigious society and in common sense, sometimes not so common. So I appreciate you having us take a look at this and making that recommendation. Thank you. Okay, so we'll see you Wednesday night.
Thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is Goldfish Farm Road Right Of Way Acquisition Update. Uh, Stacy Bel Castro, page thirty-two to thirty-four on your packet.
Good afternoon, mayor and counselors. Um, so first before I get started, I do need to correct a typo. On the first page, the last paragraph, um, the sentence notes that right of way is needed from twenty-four properties. It's actually twenty-one. So I needed to.
Is that what, that was she sent out this afternoon?
No, huh huh. No, I just needed to correct that because the math doesn't work and, and well, the number's wrong. Um, okay, so, so to start out, um, Goldfish Farm Road is an arterial street. It has very high traffic volume. It's one of the main north-south corridors in East Albany. It runs from Knox Butte Road, crosses Highway twenty and then terminates in front of Coastal Farms and the Walmart Shopping Centers. Um, it's unique in that it has a split jurisdiction. The portion between Knox Butte Road and Dogwood Avenue approximately, that um, portion is under the city's jurisdiction. The road is built to a city standard, which means there are sidewalks, you have curb and gutter, bike lanes, and then your travel lanes. Um, the portion that is under Lynn County jurisdiction is between Dogwood Avenue and Highway twenty. So back in twenty nineteen, five years ago, staff first discussed with council an opportunity to partner with Lynn County in order to improve the length of Goldfish Farm Road to a city standard um, to facilitate a transfer of the road's jurisdiction to the city. Um, it can be confusing to, to people who live along a road with split jurisdiction. Who do they call if there's drainage issues? And then also it's, it's, even though we work well with um, the county engineers, it can make development along the, the road um, just not as, not as easy as well. And so what the, what the um, the city's um, participation in partnering with Lynn County is we were going to provide funds to purchase right of way that was needed to construct the city section. The city's transportation system plan um, identifies the right of way acquisition as an eligible expense. And in twenty twenty, council approved the use of transportation system development funds to pay for the right of way. Lynn County's contribution is they are paying for the street improvements and then they also are paying for replacement of the bridge over Cox Creek. Um, the estimated cost of the county's participation, um, I just heard from their, their road engineer um, last week is four point five million dollars. They did get some assistance um, in a grant for the bridge replacement and then also I believe some um, state transportation block grant funds to, to help, um, just because of the expense. So we, um, just to give council an update, the county has been able to acquire right of way from fifteen of the twenty-one properties. The cost of that is approximately one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. They are negotiating with the five remaining property owners and the plan is to be able to construct the road next summer. Um, as long as the right of way negotiations are successful. So the purpose of this update is just, it's been so many years since staff spoke about this project to council and I, if you have any questions, I can answer them as well.
Counselor Montague?
Does the project next summer include the bridge? Or is it just the road?
It includes the bridge and I should have mentioned that the city also will be constructing a sewer line in conjunction with the county projects. It, it's in our CIP. We have a one point four million dollars from our sewer capital.
Is that expanded?
It'll be.
Or capacity?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and to help, help with any future development. And, and it's just standard practice when we
Grow up a road.
Improve a road, we want to like, replace or build the infrastructure underneath it so we don't have to cut it.
Thank you.
Counselor Smith?
Curbs, gutters and sidewalks?
Yes.
Yay!
And bike lanes.
And we've heard about people complaining about, you know, riding a bicycle or walking their dog along that for years.
Yeah.
I remember you came in twenty nineteen and talked to us about that.
Yeah.
Counselor McGee?
Would it be lights over there? Because that's kind of where Starke gets to.
Oh, that's a good question. We probably will be looking at, at adding streetlights. I know that the city portions um, have included lights and so I will, I'll check with staff tomorrow to make sure that we're including that in our comments with the county engineers.
Thank you.
Great question. Thank you. Um, Counselor Kopczynski, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Well, thank you very much. Well, when, when should we see you again? Next or this Wednesday?
Yep.
Well, so this is gonna be part of the consent calendar, correct?
It's actually just an update and um, when I have more news, I will either share it with our city manager, you know, for the Friday email or I'll come back and, and report to, to council.
All right, thank you very much. Um, actually, next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. Um, I will start with Counselor Kopczynski since he's online.
Okay, thank you. I'd just like to give a shout out to Director LaDain and the Parks Department uh, for giving us all the information on the uh, opening coming up for uh, portion of the waterfront, Montheath Park and uh, the beautiful park that I can see from the carousel, uh, that, that portion thereof. So I'm strongly looking forward to the crowds being down there and everybody enjoying it.
Thank you, counselor. Um, next we'll go word to Counselor Montague.
Okay. Um, so I attended the Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation, SEWACT, uh, meeting um, this last week. Um, it was very dense. There was quite a few things um, discussed, but I did want to kind of just bring to attention that they are working on the twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty um, plan for for uh, funding roads and streets and safety and all of that. Um, it is significantly lower than it has been in the previous, the previous two STIPS. Um, STIP is what it's called. I'm not sure what that stands for, but um, basically what, what they're telling me is this is, this next cycle, so that through twenty thirty, it is keep the wheels on the bus kind of a situation. It, it's gonna be maintenance only. Um, there will be no build outs, no new pavements. Um, there was a significant increase in ADA upgrade funding and that's due to a lawsuit that they um, that is ma, it's basically mandated. So that, that might be an opportunity for us to get some funding. I mean, it's only gonna, it's not gonna be on our local streets, but maybe be able to, if we can group together other projects, potentially we could get an ADA upgrade on one of the major roads. But I think we have most of them done already, so um, we'll continue to chase that. If I see opportunities, I'll make sure I alert staff and um.
Keep us in the loop too.
Yeah, try to keep you guys in the loop on what's, what's cooking in SEWACT. So that's all I had.
Thank you. Counselor Novak?
Thank you. I have uh, two things. One, I just want to double check on this. There was an April thirtieth Democrat Herald article in which Chief Horneton was quoted as having said that no event organizers will be paying the overtime cost this year with the rollout of the new permitting. And I want to just, did I hear that correctly? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because I'd like that to be the case.
That's correct. And the thinking is that, that you use the term grandfather, that the organizers of these events had been planning the event without taking into account that that permit was going to be revised, that practice was going to be adopted.
Yeah, I'm really happy to hear that because again, I, I think that when you're gonna do something like that, they need to have a heads up. So thank you for confirming that. And then my only other thing for this evening is with regard to the utility billing. Uh, like so many others, I received an email that said things are progressing and all that. And I'm just wondering for little old people like myself who are very old school and like paper bills, will I, can I still please have a paper bill? I don't want to pay my bills online. I don't pay anything online. And I'm just hopeful that there's a way to accommodate the old folks.
I'm, I'm very, uh, I'm pretty certain that you'll still be able to get a paper bill.
Super. Thank you. I appreciate that.
I received mine.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, for, you know.
So, are you, are you, you done?
I guess so, yeah. We're talking about billing. So that's it. That's all I had.
Well, first I want to say uh, happy birthday to my son. He's three years old today.
Awesome.
So I know he's waiting for me to get home to have some uh, strawberry cake that has Spider-Man on top of it. You are welcome to come. Well, well, no, because that's a public meeting. We say two of you can come. So um, I had some downtime with uh, I guess my family duties. I was in Texas for work. And it got me thinking about just past meetings and started thinking about some numbers in relation to, you know, those uh, the traffic cameras, right? Um, I believe the chief said seventeen thousand to twenty thousand additional tickets a year. And it got me thinking about the cost of this. And so ended up, you know, talking to our wonderful court staff September, um, learned that our uh, you know, if we had diversion, if you're a first time offender, you know, of having a, a class one traffic violation, the only way to do diversion is you have to be under the age of twenty-five. Uh, and uh, that's actually not a law. It's uh, just the previous judge, Bob Scott, made the decision. Um, and also you can only use diversion one time, like whether you've got a ticket in Arizona or other, other places in the state. Um, but so I made a little uh, handout. I'll get them over to you guys. Ray, I'm sorry you're not here. I'll email it to you. Do you want to pass these down?
Yeah, I will.
Oh, can I have one too?
No, no.
I have to memorize it, right? But just something I want to bring up um, on Wednesday, but I wanted to get all your eyes on it. Everyone's eyes on it here. So with every one of these tickets, uh, class one traffic violations, it's two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Fifty dollars of that goes to the state of Oregon, sixteen to our county, um, sixty dollars of it goes to Red Flex.
What is Red Flex?
Red Flex is the camera.
Okay.
You know, um, the city gets a hundred and thirty-nine dollars, U-turn one eighty gets zero in the, in the ticket scenario. With diversion, uh, currently, only if you're under the age of twenty-five and you've never had a traffic, class one traffic violation before, um, the city would get seventy-five dollars and then you'd take a diversion class which costs fifty dollars. Uh, you know, talking to some people in the community and actually it's kind of came up because my neighbor who was retired and had never had a ticket ever in his life, ever, uh, and is actually looking to move to the Mennonite Village, got his first ticket. And he thought he was gonna not have one ever. But uh, and he was like, it was really expensive for someone on a fixed income. And I was like, yeah, it is. Let's see if we can figure out a solution. Uh, so something I want us to noodle on is maybe making it so that whether you're over, like, anyone can do it, whether you've had a class one traffic violation or not, just you get one shot, whether over twenty-five or under twenty-five. You know, so if you've never gotten a, a ticket your entire life, there you go, you can do that. And then uh, another thing I was thinking about was um, we hired a judge at ten hours per week. I'm thinking with, you know, seventeen thousand to twenty thousand additional tickets, let's say two percent of those people, they want to uh, you know, challenge those tickets. I'm just thinking how much more of a cost load is that going to be for the judge? Just something I want us to think about. That's why I'm bringing it up right now. Um, I also was curious if we had gotten a, gotten the contract yet and if we knew the parameters of that contract, if there's a way to like opt out if we, because I heard it was twenty-four thousand dollars a month just to operate the cameras, right?
So right now, it looks like they're gonna do it and I, I actually got a copy of the contract on Friday. It's, I haven't, I haven't done anything with it yet. I think I have to sign it. Marcia still has to sign it and I think Peter still has to sign it. Um, it looks like they're phasing it into two phases because there's eight cameras, I think total, and only four currently are on this contract. And those are the two in North Albany, it's a middle school, and then two more at Queen and Gary. So they're each three.
So they're each 3,000 apiece. So right now, as the contract stands, it's going to be 12,000. But that's not factored in the cameras they're talking about putting on Queen and Elm, and then also down at, whatever it is, Gary and Pacific, maybe Sandy M. and Gary. Those must be coming in later. So right now, it's thinking as $12,000 for these four.
For four. So it'll be 24 for all eight.
Right. So it'll be 24,000 a month for all, for all eight at some point.
And that doesn't include the $60 fee we give them per ticket, correct?
Correct. It's 3,000 whether we write one ticket or 1,000 tickets, so, yeah.
So and then that brought me to my exhilarating, you know, evening of reading some ORSs. So ORS 810.438, it's about photo radar. I want to specifically mention Section 2D, you know, which is may not be used unless the sign is posted. The sign has to be on the street, be within 104, 100 yards from the location of the photo radar unit. There's other specific parameters, but it's 100 and 400 feet. I'm just thinking, how much money are we actually going to make? Or is this going to break even? Are we actually going to see, if people are going to slow down when they see like, oh, the camera's coming up because they see the sign 100 to 400 yards before the, you know, radar hits? Because it just seems like a big chunk of change, like to take a risk on, a kind of a gamble. I wasn't sure if we had like a 90-day opt-out kind of thing, or it just, it seems really, really precarious to think if we're on the hook for X amount of years, spending $24,000 a month, and we, we're paying money out, out of our pocket instead of, you know, breaking even, even.
Yeah, I don't believe there's a 90-day opt-out, but there, and I also, I think, is there anyone, Brad's here. I don't know if he knows or not, or Jerry, I'm sorry, Jerry's back there. I don't know if he's aware of it or not. I believe the contract is initially a five-year contract.
Okay.
I'll have to take a look at it, but I'm pretty sure it's a five-year start-out contract, so.
Does that sound right, Jerry? Is there an option to automatically?
There's an option, there's automatic renewal, so you can get out after five years. But if you don't, then it rolls over into another, another term, so.
And then, so ORS 810.439 with the video, with the speed cameras, you have to have an indication of the actual speed of the vehicle displayed within 100 feet, 150 feet of the location of the photo radar unit. So if it's the speed on green cameras, you have to have a flashing signs. We'd have to implement those as well.
We come at the signs on the side that say that when the school's in session or.
It's, so with ORS 810.439, it says, notwithstanding any provisions of law, and the jurisdiction's using photo radar for Section C, it says, an indication of the actual speed of the vehicle is displayed within 150 feet of the location of the photo radar unit. Signs indicating the speeds are enforced by photo radar are posted as far as practicable on all major routes entering the jurisdiction.
I think you can trust the police department to implement this according to the ORS.
Oh, absolutely. No, I'm just trying to say like, if it's 150 feet, or people are just going to slow down and not get a ticket, what is going to happen? Like, I'm just trying to think, $24,000 is a lot of money.
The idea is not to make?
Yes.
It can, so that's a great question.
I get in trouble for saying stuff.
No, it can.
It's worth it if it saves people's lives.
So it's still my time. Thank you for, let me, let me just quickly, just, so this also brings me to, I'm not sure if you want to do this, but about 10 years ago, I worked in a human factor psychology lab specifically on how to improve people, it's basically around people's behaviors with technology and machinery. So then this took me to some scholarly articles regarding traffic psychology specifically. Cross-cultural comparison of road traffic risks, perceptions, attitudes towards traffic safety and driver behavior. It's published back in 2010. Write a more recent one, Driving Interactions: Conceptual Framework for Understanding Interactive Behavior in Human and Automated Road Traffic, published in 2020. I can refer, I can send you guys some of these scholarly articles that are research-backed. I'm thinking if we are looking to improve driving behaviors and save lives, there are things we can do in relation to traffic psychology, like how we set up our roads, how we set it, how, like, with the, you know, North Albany Road, like with the elementary school, we should have a flashing light already, you know, to let people know if school's in session or when that, when that light's changing. We should make sure that we're not having such wide open roads. There are other ways to, other ways to slow down, you know, it's these wider roads with like some of the, you probably see them like the little, you know, little medium bump outs that come out. So there's ways that we can implement long-term impacts that can also save lives. So just something I wanted to present and let people noodle on.
Thank you. Councilor Smith?
We've been gone for a long time without a council meeting, and I put together a very long list of things that I wanted to bring up under business from the council this evening. When I arrived at City Hall, I realized that the list is in a photograph on my phone, which is at home on the charger.
Perfect.
My mind is a complete blank, other than things that I could comment on regarding obeying the speed limit, but I'll just, I've said that before, so I won't take up your time. I will comment that the mayor and councillor McGee and the city manager and I attended the League of Oregon Cities Spring Conference in Klamath Falls, April 26 and 27, 25 and 26. It was a very good conference. We covered recreational immunity. We got a good recap of what happened in the short session. The legislature had an excellent councillor workshop the very first morning, three hours with a clinical social worker who specializes in mental health, talking about all things related to mental health. Very, very good session, well-attended. Got an update on the implementation of the changes to Measure 110, a keynote, a speech by the Marion County Sheriff, how the deflection program, which Lynn County does not have, how that works in Marion County, and the successes that they've had with that already. And the swag bag that our staff put together as a door prize for the opening night mixer, sponsored by the League's Women's Caucus and People of Color Caucus, was held as the grand prize for all of the prizes that were given away, and people are going to be talking about Albany for a long time. That's, and I need to let you know that I will not be attending the council meeting on Wednesday night, first time since I was elected, but I have a more important personal matter to attend to, my husband is having his 80th birthday.
Oh.
So, but he doesn't look that old. Yeah, thank you.
Just a quick, quick jump in, councillor Smith, what was the swag bag that has garnered all this?
Oh, my goodness. It had, Matt has the, well, I have the list of what was in it in my phone elsewhere. But it just, it had hat, a hat and a, oh, the copy of the Carousel Book, thank you, councillor Copsensy, you needed to know that one for sure. It had a pin and a keychain, and the bag itself was a hit. The bags are available at the Visitors Association. I mean, the canvas bag just was crazy. And a bottle of local hard liquor brewed by an Albany distiller, whatever else. The staff did not pay for that. Let me be perfectly clear about that. But it was, it was just stuffed with, with good stuff, wildflower seeds and, and you name it. I imagine the hit was going to be the Carousel Book. That was a, that was a very generous contribution. So thank you to everybody who helped put that together. The winner was the council president in Happy Valley.
Councillor McGee?
Couple things. One, thank you councillor Newton for giving us some additional information, some stuff to noodle on, talk about and think about till we come back for Wednesday. I appreciate that. And secondly, yes, I attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference, 10 out of 10, highly recommend, especially if you're a newer councillor, because it is a lot of information, it can be quite overwhelming, but it also felt like a little bit of a girl's trip. I rolled down with councillor Smith and councillor from Gladstone, Garland, from Gladstone, and it was really interesting, just a lot of the information received. One of the things I really took away from the conference was the Oregon Housing and Community Services kind of update. That was really important to know what we can do to really help with, you know, folks who are home-challenged and affordable housing and making sure that we're connected and that we have our hands on the post there, what's going on. I was on the panel with the mayor, as well as the mayor from Oregon City, a councillor from Milwaukee for the People of Color, leading, leading through a person of color's lens. And it was a really good panel and session. I would say that I'm really happy to be in Albany because some other cities around the state are really struggling in things that we have really surpassed and that we don't necessarily have to struggle with, and I'm grateful that we don't. And having a rapport that we have with each other, as well as our mayor, because there are folks who don't have reports with their mayors or city managers. And so being able to just be in a space, a good space in the city of Albany, I think we are truly blessed to be and live and work and play here. The Women's Caucus was another big highlight. If you're not a part of the Women's Caucus, I highly encourage it because it's a lot of things that we face as women leaders around the state, and it's a lot of fun, and it's a lot of networking to understand what other women are doing in the state and things that they can help and mentor. So I thought that was really good. And, yeah, hanging out with councillor Smith is fun. She got a lot of knowledge. She, and I, I had a button that, that broke on my shirt, and I don't know how to sew, but councillor Smith does. And she, she helped me out real quick. And, and she said that I'm a very quiet sleeper, that it kind of scared her. She thought, make sure I was still breathing over there. Because I, I don't do a lot of movement and I don't snore, and I'm just very quiet when I sleep. And she's like, I was a little concerned, so she got up, but, but I, it, it was, it was really sweet to spend some time, some quality time outside the chambers with councillor Smith and councillor Garland. Councillor Garland is in the Women's Caucus, and it was really fun. So if you're a newer councillor, I really, really, really encourage you to go to at least one, even if it's the Fall Conference or, because it's just good. It's good to be in a space and just really, even if you're not a newer councillor and you just want to refresh, it's also good. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Don't mention the road trip back, though.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I rode back with the mayor. My bad. Okay, I forgot. Because, you know why I forgot? Because it's just certain things you talk about with ladies I ain't going to talk about with you, Alex. That ain't going to work. That ain't going to work. But I will say, Alex reminds me of one of my uncles. So he's real cautious on the road. He ain't playing games. He keeping his eye on the prize and, and, but it was a really smooth ride back. He got me back in one piece. And Alex is such the like uncle. I'm like, I made it in the house. I'm all good, thank you. You can roll off now.
But I waited.
He did. That's why I say I'm in the house, you can roll off. And it was a smooth ride, and, and we made really good timing, got us through some rain and, and, but I appreciate him. Thank you so much. We have a great mayor, and I just want to say, he be bragging on us to everybody. Our name precedes us, seriously. Especially the women on the council, no offense, Ray, but he was like, I'm surrounded by smart women, all smart women. Great answer, great answer.
Thank you very much for that. And it was a pleasure writing back with councillor McGee. It was the first time we'd been that alone in a space where you could just talk to one another. Talked about Chicago and my favorite cities. I served in the military. I spent two years in Chicago, and I'll never forget it. So thank you. A few things I have tonight. This Wednesday, the young people that was selected, I selected for the If I Were a Mayor contest, will be doing their presentations. So we'll have a fifth grader will be doing her presentation on her poster, amazing young woman named Reagan Wen. I'm hoping her family joins us. And then Chelsea Lopez from, she's from Timber Ridge, and then Chelsea Lopez from Kalapuiya will be reading her essay to us. I've read a lot of essays multiple times, and hers kept rising to the top, so she'll be here with us. And then amazing young person named Hadley Huzevka. I met with, her video was fantastic, and it was a well-done piece of artwork. And I've asked her to come, and she's going to present her, her video and her, and kind of give her inspirations for what she did for a project. And I feel bad for her because all the other children, young people were presentable in their, in their own minds. Well, she had just come to school first thing in the morning, and Matt and I are standing at the front of the classroom. Oh, by the way, you won. And she was like, my makeup wasn't right, my hair wasn't right. So I took, I took her family out to lunch and got to know her a little better. Parents are both educators, retired, and she was an amazing, amazing young woman, and I'm looking forward to her being on city council at some point in the future with somebody else. And then the wine walk rotary, great job. The Rotary puts on a fantastic wine walk every year, and I make it down there and I meet so many wonderful people from other cities. They come here from Salem, from Portland, from Flemish, from Newport, and that's just the people that are walking around enjoying our space, enjoying the city of Albany's downtown. But the vendors also come from Canby and Carlton to bring their wares to our downtown. So I go to each place and thank them for coming and joining us for an evening of wine and wonderful conversation. I'm working on a committee to replace the retiring Peggy McGuire from CSC. We had our first meeting, and it's going to be hard to replace her. She's a very amazing person, and the work that she's done in this community over the last 20, half 25 or so years, it's going to be hard to find somebody to step into that space. The LOC conference, again, it was a pleasure serving with the women on this council, but I met a lot of mayors that asked me, how do you get along with the women in your council? I said, well, do you talk to them? Don't talk to them, talk with them. And said, and sometimes you're going to have to listen and just shut up and, and let them tell you what's going on. So I've been married 39 years for a reason. Two ears, one mouth, I'm good. Okay. And what else will be here? House Bill 4002, I kind of missed that discussion because I was dealing with a personal matter, but the House Bill 4002, the sheriff, what was his name? The sheriff Hunter from Marion County did a fantastic job. And when I testified, I went after him, and when I testified before the legislature, and he had left so fast, I didn't get a chance to talk to him, but I had a chance this time to thank him for his presentation. And then what else? Oh, and if you want to take a, listen to some of the women that serve on city councils and mayors, LOC has a podcast called Her Own Wings, and the very first person was councillor McGee. And if you're interested in your daughter, yourself, or your niece, or your, please listen to these podcasts. The stories are absolutely amazing. I'm well behind where I should be, but councillor McGee kicked it off and started it, something that all these really powerful people, women are listening and sharing their stories about their journeys and how they serve on their cities, for their cities. And other than that, I'll turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. You have heard in my last email to you Friday about the development information session that we've scheduled for the 15th of May, that it's next Wednesday at the Riverfront Community Center at 6:30, where staff will discuss middle housing and the effects of HB 2001. Councillor Novak had mentioned under the recreational immunity. I wanted to point out that recreational immunity is a longstanding concept. And you had mentioned, I think, bridges and sidewalks and wanted to make sure that it wasn't inappropriate. And I wanted to point out that recreational immunity applies to immunity to recreation. It's not blanket immunity across the city. So there are bridges and sidewalks that have nothing to do with parks, and they are not covered under recreational immunity. This restoration of recreational immunity is a good thing because it allows cities to provide recreation without fear of, of litigation for people having an accident while they're recreating. Let's see, tours of Vine Street. If any of you are interested in touring Vine Street, I would highly recommend it. I've had a chance several times to go out there and visit. The water treatment staff are very proud of what they do, and it would certainly be very good to see that old building. It is a brick building, and my college had brick buildings that had to be seismically retrofitted, and it is phenomenally expensive. But if you don't do it, it poses quite a risk when you are waiting for the next big earthquake to happen. Finally, I wanted to ask Zhengzhong Nielong to stand up, if he would. He, he will tell you that he goes by the name Cheng, because he figures it's much easier to pronounce that than to pronounce Zhengzhong Nielong. And Cheng is from Laos. He's here as a fellow with the Young Southeast Asian Leadership Initiative. His interests are in sustainable forest management. His interests are in sustainable forest management and environmental awareness to protect biodiversity. So he, he'll be spending some time with our Environmental Services, our Public Works Ops staff, and our Parks and Urban Forestry staff. He's here for four weeks. The first week was last week, and I would encourage you to say hello when you get a chance and introduce yourself. And with that, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Peter, and it's always a pleasure to work with you and the staff. Great job this, on all the things you're working on. And with that, our next meeting will be on the 8th of May, Wednesday night at 6:00 PM. Looking forward to a lively meeting, meeting.